Good Gary?
Yep.
I'll be in six o'clock, I'll call the meeting to order and please make sure that your phones are unmuted or shut off and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone in the public. Patty, would you take roll call?
Ryan.
Here.
Dan.
Here.
Don.
Here.
Wanda.
She's on the way.
John.
Here. Moving on to the agenda. First of all, ask for any financial conflicts from the board members?
I have none.
I have none.
I have none.
I have none.
And Wanda probably has the...
Yep, she probably will.
Because there's two of them, but I'll let her explain that.
When she gets here, we'll, we'll ask her. Next item on the agenda, public comment. Public comment is a time...
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the, from the commission? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now we'll do the public comment. Public comment is a time for persons to address this body on any subject. No action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. Each person has up to three minutes to speak. There shall be no personal attacks against the members of this body, county staff, individuals or organizations. The chair has the authority to enforce this policy. Failure to adhere to these rules may result in forfeiture of the remaining speaking time. Are there any public comments?
We have one.
Bob Gleick.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Bob Gleick and the comments I would like to make on is, one of the agenda items tonight is the contract with Manyaha County for the housing of our juveniles. I firmly believe that, you know, a lot of, a lot of talk has been about how expensive these individuals we have up there right now have been for the county this year. One thing I don't think we're considering when we're figuring out expense is that part of that deal is fixed cost. Bedding, feed, whatever medical problems they have on that course, we are charged for it. But Manyaha County are professionals. They've been doing this for years and we're looking at a one-time expenditure that we may not have next year, knock on wood. It's the cost of building our own facility, adding employees to man that facility, plus their privileges and all that stuff, I think is going to be too high compared to, okay, say we have a facility, holds one individual for a year, yet you still have the fixed expense of the employees, the cost of maintenance, et cetera. Besides the fact of, would you get the public to back tax opt-out for us to build it? Let alone, you know, money's tight right now. And myself personally, I think we should be letting the professionals handle it because they know the law better than we do. We may learn it after time. If we wanted to be spending extra money on stuff, I think we should be throwing the money more toward the state's attorney's office so they can hire more lawyers to help them get these cases through the system so we lose the expense. And I would suggest that the commission work on their lobbying skills because we're going to need to go through the state and maybe even our federal officers to get some of these laws changed to help us with this system. Thank you for your time.
Thanks Bob. Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, closed public comment. Next item on the agenda, District Three update, Lori.
Thank you. You all are probably used to seeing Greg Henderson up here and we are all missing him, but he is enjoying retirement. He stops in the office once in a while and the only sad part was he didn't get to do as much ice fishing this year as he would have liked because it wasn't cold enough. But he did tell me, Patty, that I'm supposed to bring pens to every county, so.
Yes.
We can't sign the agreement without that.
I guess not. I forgot to take him out to Tripp County earlier and they, they called and reminded me, so. Just gonna, won't take a lot of your time this evening, but I do want to thank you for being members of District Three for the last 50 years. We celebrated our 50th anniversary last year and so we're moving on to the next 50. Inside the little packet that I handed out here, on the first page, it kind of gives some general information about the planning district and the staff and the services. The next page would talk about the different agency relationships that we maintain with everything from the governor's office of economic development and DOT and DNR at the state level to EDA at the federal level and USDA rural development and so forth. Some of the regional highlights for our office for 2023 included, you know, continued support for small businesses through the Small Business Development Center, which is free confidential counseling for people that want to start a business or purchase a business or transition or maybe even exit a business. We have folks on staff that do that. We still run the Area Wide Business Council, which is a regional revolving loan fund for, again, people that are looking for some low interest assistance in business loans. We don't compete with banks, we partner with them, but that, that entity probably has about $10 million of loans on the books right now. And one of the new things that we got into in 2023 was meat and poultry. We applied for some funding through USDA rural development for meat and poultry specific loans, did seven loans to Meat Lockers this year in our 15-county region for almost $1.2 million. So that's been a good thing. Keeping going in the food theme, we are in a partnership with planning districts in the other districts in South Dakota, North Dakota and Minnesota in a regional food business center. And that is something new. We, we didn't do a lot with food in the past, but if COVID taught us anything is that there are some areas there that could be firmed up and so we partnered up. The Minnesota group wrote the application and now we have funding to do technical assistance to help folks that are probably more your specialty producers, farm market, garden type, those types of things. But there are resources out there and we can help them apply for those things. So keep that in mind going forward. That would be a, a new thing for us as well.
Who, who does that in your, in District Three?
At our office? The two gentlemen that are working on it right now are Brian McGinnis and Eric Ambrosen. So, yeah, they've been, they've been doing some of the training, going to some of the meetings and that sort of thing. Yeah, yeah. Let's see here. We wrote 43 funding applications, 10 were approved for a little over $5.3 million. You know, we continue to do a lot of the GIS work and I know Yankton County has taken good advantage of that with some of the stuff they were doing with you, Ryan, this year with the application online and whatnot. Harry out there at the, at the office has been working on that a lot. So that's kind of some of the more interesting or unique things that we had going on. If you turn the page and get to kind of the, the next one, it's yellow, return on investment for Yankton County specifically. Talks about the dues you guys have paid over the last 50 years and then the financial assistance that's been received, ratio of $222 to one. So we want to keep that going, we want to keep that on an upward trajectory. It lists there the applications we wrote in '23. We did a Assistant to Firefighters grant for Leesterville Fire and Rescue that did not get any legs, that one was denied, as well as the one for Raider Park Rec Trail out at Gayville, that one is denied. I do think they're going to go again this year for another application round with that. On the good side, Ball Field Improvements in Leesterville and Pickleball, Pickleball Court Conversion up at West Side Park were funded through Land and Water Conservation Fund. And then Gayville did, was able to secure a small community planning grant through, I think maybe USDA, I'm not sure who provides those. Anyway, so that's, that was kind of the, the bulk of the apps. If you kind of look down over the, on the other page where it talks about 2023 Yankton County work activities, we had four of those ABC loans in Yankton. We have had 25 clients take advantage of our SAM registration and renewal assistance and then also involved in that Apex stuff would be any procurement that people need to do with the government. There's a lot of paperwork involved and we help folks with that process and that, there's no fee for that. So don't ever hesitate to send folks our way for that. I know we've had a few other little grants that have been worked on in the year, AARP Community Challenge Application, a Naverah Community Proposal, the Rec Trails for Gayville and so forth. We already talked about the LWCF that were, that were approved. We're doing a lot of the SRF program admin, which is kind of for the ARPA funds that came through, a lot of the water and wastewater type projects. I know, I think they're still working on, maybe have closed out in '23, the CDBG for the homeless shelter. So that was on the list. FEMA Hazard Mitigation Project Admin, I believe, is Marn Creek Property Buyout. And then also assistance with the Stone Church Road project that's going on.
That's a FEMA pre-disaster mitigation grant.
Yep, yep. And then housing, a lot of housing issues. I know that, I think Eric did some stuff with the folks out looking at things for Majestic Bluff out there. He is also doing some strategic planning, maybe with you, Don, I think did a little bit last year, talking about maybe a little bit more again this year. He just brought that up to me today, so.
We're going to have a discussion today to set the dates.
Good, perfect, yeah. That's great. And then, I mean, we just continue to do some of the reporting for ARPA for some of the smaller communities like Utica and Leesterville. We were very involved with the Lewis and Clark Behavioral Project out north there with Phase One Environmental and now admin for some of the USDA funds that are coming through for that. EDA project would be the Continued Wastewater Treatment Center and I think that's hopefully wrapping up soon. Again, there's that RFBC, I know we've worked with the Yankton Farmers Market Group on some stuff for that. Down toward the bottom of that page, you get a lot of the GIS and the things that they're doing with Next Gen 911, the, the online building permit application, 911 addressing, rural addressing, that all continues to be kind of our bread and butter stuff that we provide for you folks. And then the very last item, Grant Admin for Brownfields Asbestos, that I believe was Sacred Heart Church and Link Auditorium, probably some pass-through funds for that. At the back of the booklet, there's some, just some tables that talk about the other services we have and the numbers and things like that, Governor's House, the number of sales we've done over the years and currently. That continues to be a really sought-after program, however, they continue, it used to be a three-year wait, I think it's getting a little bit better, but I think it's still two years out for people that are purchasing those now. Also have the numbers in there for the SBDC clients, the Apex, the loans, the meat and poultry loans and then the different GIS services. So we thank you guys for your continued membership. We're just a phone call away, we're, you're lucky to have us right here in town, we're lucky to be here in town, so.
Lori, I did...
Questions for me.
Lori, I just got an email today actually from, from Eric and Sophie Johnson on the, here a few months back, we did a resolution for the Flap Grant.
Oh, yeah.
And, and that's been approved in conjunction with Clay County, so.
Okay.
So I just got that email late this afternoon that it actually was approved and Eric has done a tremendous job and a lot of work on, on that project, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you for working on it.
Oh, I'm glad to hear it got, it got legs, yeah.
Yes.
So, that's always, that's always a win.
Yep.
What are the key points we should be doing as county commissioners to help grow your facilities or your ability to do things and our ability to receive the benefit of those?
What should you do?
Yeah.
Well, this year, I mean, I'm glad you asked because this year we are tasked with re, or updating, I shouldn't say rewriting, updating what's called the SEDS, the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. And that's something that we have to do every five years to satisfy EDA, which provides, you know, funding for us, for our operations out there. So I would say to be helpful this year, if you see surveys come out, if you see meetings come about, about that, please come, give your opinions. We are looking for what our priorities are in our 15-county region on development and that type of thing. So that would be helpful to us to get that ready to go for the next five years.
You know, Lori, I'd just like to say, you know, how much we appreciate, I work out, work a lot with them, with the commission, but you know, the James River Water, a lot of our grants go through your planning district too and these small towns, they wouldn't have a lot of options without you guys, you know, with their wastewater and water projects. So, and we've seen that in our small towns, Utica, Leesterville, Gayville, Mission Hill Vonn, they've all used Irene, have all used District Three and so it's just not the county, it's our small towns and then of course Yankton as well and I've heard nothing but good things, so thank you.
Thank you, yeah, thanks, appreciate it. I don't have anything else for you folks unless you have more questions for me, but like I said, we're your, we're here at your service, you just have to make a phone call or stop out and we'll see what we can do for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is our Agreement Detention Services with Manyaha County and I believe that's just a, a contract that we, obviously we utilize and just need to, need a...
I'm moving to approve the contract.
I have a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ryan. Any further discussion from...
Yeah, we, I just, it's something we pretty much have to approve, there's, there's really no options to it and, you know, the, the daily rate is $458.48 and then the shelter care will be $289.20 and again, for juveniles and we really have no option but to do that, so.
Correct. At this time, Wanda, Wanda just appeared and I'd like to ask if you have any conflicts of interest?
I do not.
Okay, wonderful.
Except...
There was, there was one.
Yeah, I got you. We got you.
Okay.
Okay, so I have a, a motion and a second on the agreement for the detention services of Manyaha County. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'd, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, to approve the March 5th, 2024 minutes.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, motion by Dan, second by Wanda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Gary, second reading on Maybomb, read it. Oh, okay.
Let's go to Platte.
Okay, I gotta learn to look at the clock when I do this stuff, so. Should we go to some Platts?
All right. First plat we have is a plat of lots A1, A2, A3, A4, A5, A6, A7, A8, A9 and A10 of Lot 21, Whitetail Run in the southeast quarter, the northeast quarter of Section 16, Township 93 North, Range 56 West of the Fifth Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Move approval.
Got a motion to approve from Dan, can I get a second?
Second.
Second from Wanda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Second plat of, plat of parcel A and parcel B in tract one of the south, 244 feet of the replat of Lot 1, Lakeview Bluffs in the northeast quarter of Section 16, Township 93 North, Range 56 West of the Fifth Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Move approval.
Got a motion to approve, can I get a second by Wanda? Motion by Dan. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Next one's plat of Page Edition in the east half of the southwest quarter of Section 10, Township 93 North, Range 56 West of the Fifth Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Move approval. Is that, is that list?
Yep.
Yes.
Oh, that was list?
Yeah, it's their daughter, their daughter's name.
Okay, I have a motion to approve by Wanda, second by Dan.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Next one is plat of Lot 2 of Parcel C of McVeigh Edition in the southwest quarter, the northwest quarter in Section 18, Township 93 North, Range 56 West of the Fifth Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Move approval.
Motion by Don to approve, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Dan, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
The second part of cleanup for that area is a plat of the remaining portions of lots one and two of Parcel A and the remaining portion of Parcel B of McVeigh Edition, all being in the northwest, northwest quarter of the southwest quarter and in the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter, Section 18, Township 93 North, Range 56 West of the Fifth Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota, now to be known as Hillsland, Track Two in the northwest quarter of the southwest quarter and the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 18, Township 93 North, Range 56 West of the Fifth Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
And Gary, this is just a large parcel that's just being replatted into smaller.
Correct, it was cleaning up, yeah, the, the lines moved a little bit, so.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Dan, second by Wanda. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Next one's a replat of lots five and five A, Block 1 of the Marina Del Estates and Lot 6 and 7 of the Marina Del Estates West Subdivision located in the west half of the southwest quarter of Section 8, Township 93 North, Range 56 West of the Fifth Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota, now to be known as Lot 9, Block 1 of Marina Del Estates and Lot 6A of Marina Del Estates West Subdivision located in the west half of the southwest quarter of Section 8, Township 93 North, Range 56 West of the Fifth Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Move approval.
Got a motion by Wanda, second by Don. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Last one's a plat of lots four, five and six, Forest Lake Subdivision in the northwest quarter, the northeast quarter of Section 13, Township 93 North, Range 57 West of the Fifth Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Ryan. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, one question for Gary.
Yes.
What, what is Goshen Nation LLC?
That's just their company name, LLC.
Okay.
So, yeah, they're the ones that are building those, those zero lot lines, setback things that we talked about a while back, so.
Those are the shared building where you can, you can like purchase as a garage stall.
Purchase a unit and we'll put things inside of it.
Or a workshop. Or a works, it could be.
Not all, not all man caves.
It could be a she shed too, Wanda.
Thanks, Gary.
We'll go to claims.
We could do claims? At this time, I'd ask for a motion to approve the claims number one. Are there any questions on that?
To approve claim number one.
Have a motion to approve claims by Wanda, second by Ryan. Any further discussion on claims?
I'd, I'd mention that, uh, in the juvenile detention, that was what, forty-seven, forty-eight thousand dollars again this month?
Forty-two thousand, some, something, yes, this month.
It went down.
It went down a little bit.
Well, that's, that's, uh, and, and again, for members of the public, that's something that we have to pay for. It's, it's, uh, required by statute, so. We don't have an option of not paying for that, so.
And we're three months into the year, and we have three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars budgeted for this year. And we're at about a hundred and thirty thousand for the years, year to date, so. Just, just so the public understands and knows what that's, what we're doing there, so.
Well, they, they need to understand where their tax dollars are going.
Exactly, exactly. So I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, we also have a second set of claims.
I move we approve the second set of claims.
Second.
I have a motion by Ryan, second by Don, to approve the second set of claims. And, and just for public knowledge, the second set of claims is, is Wanda's, uh, firm does some services for us, so she abstains from that, from that second set of claims. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And one abstention.
With one abstention. Okay, um.
Move approval of the auditor treasurer report and pooled cash report.
Second.
I have a motion by Dan, second by Wanda, to approve the auditor treasurer's report and the pooled cash report. Any further discussion from the commission? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
All right, we can be, do our second reading. Uh, applicants requesting to rezone a lot in moderate density rural residential district R two to a low density rural residential district R one. Per article eighteen, section eighteen oh nine, an article twenty property is legally described as block nine, Deer Run subdivision located in the east half of the southwest quarter and the west half of the southeast quarter, section one, township ninety-three north, range fifty-seven west of the fifth principal meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota, as per plat as recorded in book S nineteen, page one twenty-five, E nine one one. Address is four three three four eight, three hundred and tenth street, Yankton. And the applicants are here if you have any questions.
Any questions on the, from the commission?
No.
Uh, this time I'd ask for public comment. Any public comments on this particular issue? Seeing none. Public comment is closed. Need a motion to approve.
Well, Mr. Chair, just like you guys are wanting to rezone from R two to R one, possibly hobby farm in a shed. And you guys both realize that if you do do that, they're conditional uses, so you'll have to come back. Okay. I just wanted to make sure they realize
Perfect.
Let, realize that they'd have to come back, so I don't.
Move approval.
Okay, I have a motion to approve by Ryan.
Second.
Second by Dan.
I think Wanda got that one. Give it to her.
She doesn't matter.
Second by Wanda. Any further discussion?
Yeah, further discussion. I think it makes sense. We, we did the same thing to the neighboring property. The lot is more than large enough to meet that, and it just, I think it makes sense to do so.
Good. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Congratulations to you guys.
Next agenda item is, uh, we want the commission to, to discuss about our, uh, starting a consent agenda or, or approving for, to do a consent, consent agenda. Uh, I guess the only reason I brought that up is because we could have had all of these plats actually listed on a consent agenda and gotten that done with one vote instead of all, each one of them individually. Any further comments?
My, my only concern is if you have a consent agenda and somebody wants to come in, complain or object to it, how do you do that then? Do you just go consent agenda, I'll accept that one?
You can take one out.
So then they can't, they can't show up at the time of the meeting. They have to let you know in advance?
Well, I'll list on the agenda, I'll list consent agenda and all the items under that.
Like A, B, C, and D, and so if I object to D, for example, then, then I would show up.
Yep.
Okay?
Cause at the beginning of consent agenda, the time, you can, um, make a motion to, uh, take item A out for discussion.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Dan.
May, uh, yeah, I, I appreciate your, your efforts about looking to make this run efficient. Good thing we had some of these plats today, or we'd have been sitting around, but, uh, you know, I really think as a, as a, in the spirit of transparency, we go through the plats really fast in this, uh, uh, doing a pretty good job. And I guess I like the, the way we do it now. If we get to the point, maybe we're, we're doing ten, twenty plats, maybe that's the time to look for it. But having a lot of plats that we're doing, guys, I think is a good indication of economic growth and hope in our community cause people are wanting to do things. That's a good sign for us, and, uh, you know, the claims, the point Don brought up, spent forty-two thousand dollars.
True.
That's, that's good. The citizens know, just like Don said, that's where a lot of tax dollars are going, so. And you, you run a efficient meeting, and we're getting through this pretty fast, so. I'd say it's a good conversation, but maybe, my opinion is maybe not at this time, so.
I kinda agree with you, Dan. Um, we had seven plats tonight. We went through them in less than seven minutes. So, a minute per plat, I mean.
And it gives us just one last time to double check over everything, cause the last thing we'd wanna have somebody, ten years down the road, their, their plat is, made something wrong with it, and so I, I would agree with you, Ryan, and we're, we're going through it quick, and so.
You know, a few years back, if you remember, we have the department head reports on consent agenda.
See, I, and I, I like the ability for, you know, like Brian Hunoff and the sheriff to come in and say, hey, this is what I'm doing, uh, this is why I'm doing it. Uh, that's really their opportunity. I, you know, even, even downstairs, uh, with the contact center, that's really their opportunity to talk to not only us, but the community, so. At this time, I, I kinda like how it is, but that's my opinion, so.
So are you making a motion to deny?
Well, I, I
I don't think you have to make one.
Yeah.
It's just my discussion.
Yeah, it, you know, if, if meetings were going till midnight, I'd say, yeah, but you're getting us out of here pretty, pretty quick, so.
Okay, appreciate that.
It's a good conversation to have, though.
Okay. I guess at this time, then we'll open up for public comments again for the second time. No more public comments. I'll close public comments. Commission updates. Wanda?
Well, I had a nice visit with, um, the newspaper, or an agent of the newspaper about juvenile issues. And, um, again, I don't know how we're gonna make better parents and better children to reduce the amount of money that we pay for juvenile detention, but we're working on it.
Okay, good. Ryan?
You have to make a cost to the, to the parents. It has to cost them something.
Well, it's supposed to cost them something, but a lot of the folks that, whose children are going are not of good financial means, so.
Maybe they just walk a ditch and clean a ditch. They should be doing something.
I get it. I'm okay with that. I don't care if the children are out there too, cleaning the ditch. I'm, I'm good with that.
I don't have an update for tonight.
Okay. Any, anything else, Don?
Well, I, I attended, uh, my monthly GOD, GOED update, and I'd like to throw out a few of their analytics. Site Selection Magazine released their annual Governor's Cup results. For the first time, South Dakota took, took home first place in total projects per capita. Wallet Hub recently released a study on average credit scores by state. South Dakota's average credit score was seven eighteen, tied for sixth place. Seven months of fiscal year, fiscal year twenty twenty-four, general fund data is in. To this point, South Dakota's ongoing general fund receipts for fiscal year are a hundred and four point two million higher than they were at this point last year. Growth of seven point two percent. This level, this, uh, level of general fund receipts is also eight point three percent above the legislative adopted estimate, and one point four percent above the governor's recommended estimate. USD, USDA recently released farm sector financial indicator, indicators which measure the productivity of farms by state. South Dakota ranked ninth highest overall in net value added at eight point four billion dollars. On a per capita basis, South Dakota ranks second overall, and more than eleven times higher than the national average. This is some pretty impressive, uh, things that's going on in our state and community. South Dakota's January business condition index value was fifty-six point four, a slight decline from what it was the prior month, but still airing on the positives, uh, uh, sentiment side for short-term economic growth. South Dakota's index value remains the highest of any state in the region. U.S. and Mid-American values are, uh, respectively forty-nine point one and fifty point nine, indicating mixed sentiment on short-term economic growth for the nation. And this is a kind of a, a negative guesstimate. Both, uh, lag South Dakota's index value. Overall, supply managers nationwide were pessimistic about the twenty-four economic outlook. Only fourteen percent predict a twenty twenty-four economic expansion at, uh, the national level. Looking at the labor market. At two point one percent, South Dakota's unemployment rate remains near historical lows and is currently second lowest among the states. This is consistent with other labor measures for South Dakota. For example, South Dakota currently has the fourth highest employment population ratio and the sixth highest labor force participation rate at sixty-seven point nine percent. Housing. As a rate, South Dakota's permitted, uh, housing units, uh, translate to seven hundred and sixty-nine units per one hundred thousand residents. This rate is seventy-three percent higher than the national average and ranks, uh, sixth highest among states. South Dakota's building permits are also quite concentrated on multifamily housing options with an average units, uh, per building of one point nine nine and the fifth highest rate of any state over the most recent twelve-month period. Lastly, uh, on the housing cost front, Realtor dot com lists South Dakota's current median price per square foot at two hundred and ten dollars, which is six percent more affordable than the national average. As a per capita rate, there are five percent fewer houses for sale in South Dakota than the national average. South Dakota's listing prices also remain very stable, with eighty-four percent of the listings seeing no price changes uh, from the prior month. This is the fourth highest rate of listing, uh, price stability of any state. So, you know, we listen to our national news and our state news, and we can think everything's kinda going to pot, but our state is doing dang good. And that's because, uh, all of the county, all of the people are doing pretty much the right things. And, uh, we should be proud of that. The other item, uh, that I wanted to discuss, uh, under comments was, uh, strategic planning. Eric says, uh, he'd be open for, uh, any Friday in April beginning on the fifth. Doesn't matter unless, uh, you know, it's all. So we need to pick a couple dates uh, to get started on our strategic planning.
We, we have the nineteenth for board equalization already, consolidated board.
So then it's, uh, April fifth, twelfth, or twenty-sixth?
He's not available on the fifth. Is that what you said?
Anytime after the
Yeah, after the fifth, beginning on the fifth. I checked my schedule, and I'll be open any Friday in April beginning on the fifth, so the fifth.
Okay, so the fifth will work?
I think the fifth would work for me, but I don't know about you guys.
I didn't bring my calendar, so.
Um, I'm having some, the SDACC strategic planning on the tenth. I don't know if we wanna do ours before or after that, um, you know.
I don't think it would hurt if we could do it on the fifth, we could get started on ours. And then we could kinda compare.
Good idea.
That's fine with me.
At what time?
We can do it any time of the day.
Like one?
I'd do, I'd rather do the morning, but it's up to you guys.
I'm, I'm usually better in the afternoon, so. Late afternoon always works in my schedule best.
I agree.
Me as well, but I didn't bring my calendar, so I, I'll go with, if.
Twelve-thirty and, and chairman buys lunch, and working lunch? Isn't that, that's tradition, isn't it?
I've never heard of that tradition.
Well, you could start new traditions, dude. I'm, I'm fine, what time, Ryan, what, what works for you guys? Uh, you and John? Like, are you talking one o'clock, or are you talking later than that? Cause it is Friday, so we hate to go too late.
Would ten o'clock work?
I'm good with five o'clock in the evening.
Well, you can do ten o'clock, but I won't be there.
Yeah, I, I, I like, I like four o'clock.
Four o'clock?
Yeah.
Well, for, to start at four o'clock?
Yeah.
I, for me, on a Friday, I think that's asking a lot of, you know, District Three to be here, and then, I don't know. That's, that's kinda cutting into the weekend for people.
We should ask Lori before she left.
You wanna compromise with two?
I'm pretty flexible.
I'm fine with that, and then we can
Two o'clock?
Let's do two.
Cause we, we all might need a, a beer after getting out of here after it.
April.
Fifth.
Intend strategic planning.
What time you said?
Two. Two o'clock.
Two o'clock.
April fifth.
If we do this properly, we'll probably still be here late in the evening. That's all I had.
I gotta follow that up. That's a, that's a
You're, you're up, Dan.
That's a tough one. Uh, just an update, I, I went, uh, and attended the, the Wind Task Force tour. It's pretty interesting. I'd never been that close to wind turbines before. We actually got to do a tour and go inside. They're quite a bit louder than you would expect, and, uh, extremely tall. Um, which was, it was just an interesting experience. If you guys haven't gone or would like to, I would, I would encourage you you to just check them out. Um, our eight-county meeting on Thursday, if you can attend. And I believe Alex is gonna be talking about our diversion program for, uh, and then March twenty-sixth, um, our veteran service officer, Rob Stickney, is hosting a veteran coffee group at the VFW, and you're all welcome to show up. But it's basically to talk about, uh, to the veterans in the community about what they're eligible and to, and all.
March twenty-sixth?
March twenty-sixth, that, uh, it's on the door, I think. Is that at ten? I wanna say it's ten, but it's taped to the door out there. Um, I think I might have it in the calendar. It is at
Thank you.
At, starting at ten o'clock.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, all I have is, is we've, we've had a couple of meetings with our, our Um, all I have is, is we've, we've had a couple of meetings with our, our juvenile detention task force. Um, the last meeting last week, we did discuss, or we, we had the state of South Dakota people and, and who's, who are in charge of the juvenile J D C I that were on a Zoom call with us, um, found out some very interesting things that we can actually co inhabit as long as there's no sight or sound between juveniles and, and inmates. So there's, you know, we're still looking at other options or, or discussions, but, uh, it was kind of interesting that there really was no guidelines other than sight and sound difference between juveniles and adults in, in the jail. So, so, so we found out there are more options than just building a facility or buying a facility to do this in. So that's where we're at so far. Uh, our next meeting is scheduled for next week and we're going to continue on with the, with the task force and having meetings, so. And as we move farther down the line, we'll bring more people involved, get more people involved in the, in the, on the task force. And, uh, Dr. Tom Stanich and was involved in the last meeting. So we had, and, and we also had the, the city police force was also there, so. Getting more information and putting, looking at more different options, so. Moving forward, I guess, we're, we're, it's, it's just a task force, a feasibility study to see what we're gonna do, so. Uh, it was very interesting though, visiting with the, the people from the state. That's all I got on that subject. So, I need a motion.
I would move to go into executive session for poor relief issues pursuant to S D C L one dash twenty five dash two and S D C L twenty eight dash thirteen and thirteen point one point three, as well as executive session for personnel issues pursuant to S D C L one dash twenty five dash two sub one.
I have a motion by Wanda, I get a second?
Second.
Second by Dan to move into executive session. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Well, I just.
Deb Lilly.
I just put it out there.
Alec. Martin. Gary Vedder. Foot couldn't be there, so was Rothenberg, was there on the last meeting, but Foot is, he's the, he's, he's the main guy. And then, um, Tom Stanich and myself, the two people from the state that were on Zoom, you probably get to get their names from Alec.
I don't need their names, I just wanted to.
Okay, yeah, yep, 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 okay. And I, I think next Thursday's our next meeting, I'll double check and let you know when our next meeting is.
Okay, they're not public, though.
No, no.
I just, I just.
Yeah, we'll do, I will, it's, it's just interesting.
I was told to do that.
Okay. I'd move to go back on the record or come out of executive session, however you want to look at it.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to come out of executive session and back into regular session. All, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I would move to approve County Welfare Burial Number 2401-004 in the amount of $1,250. County Welfare Burial 2401-005 in the amount of $1,250. County Welfare MI 2401-006 in the amount of $500 and County Welfare MI 2401-007 in the amount of $500 for the aggregate amount of $3,500.
A motion by Wanda. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Ryan. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Anyone have any items for next week, next meeting? Wanda?
Mr. Alec to come and discuss.
To come in and discuss.
And I'll have an IT item.
Diversion.
And, and Ryan will discuss some IT stuff. That situation too. Do you think we could get an update on that or do you just want to wait till that goes through the process?
Yeah, I think we're going to be waiting on that a bit.
Okay, okay. That's a good idea.
Is IT just a discussion?
Probably a discussion. I'll, I'll update you.
You can, yeah, you can update.
Yeah.
Update up on that.
By next week, yeah.
Patty, did you have time to pull together those figures?
I'll do it tomorrow. I promise.
So that'll be on, on?
I promise.
Yeah.
I'll even email them.
Oh, you don't have to.
Okay, I promise. I promise. I promise.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
This time I would, yes. Dan, motion to adjourn. Second by Wanda. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Did you say that? No, I didn't.
Want to do this tomorrow?
Yes. I got, I'm going to have to come in and have you notarize that anyway.
I have a question. I have a question.
With the, with the.
Here's a pen if anybody wants one.